I'd like to open the February the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three Beppo planning and zoning mission meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. And then if we could have the commissioners introduce themselves, please. Do you want to start with Mr. Carson?
Kenny Carson.
Linda Curtis.
Kenny Kessler.
And Stevens chair.
Katie Graham.
Rob Wallace. Seth.
Rob Blackguard.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob.
Bob Blackguard.
Mr.
Paul Shandley.
And we have Doug down there as well.
Doug Hewitt, yeah.
Daph. That's.
Uh, we have Jolene, uh, who is the, uh, reporting secretary. She was very, very thankful. She was willing to help us this evening. I'm Beth Covagno, the planning director.
David.
Dave McCollum, London's coordinator.
Thank you. Before we get into the business of tonight's meeting, I need to read a couple of things into the record. First is just please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by the commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town website. We received communication from Dan Carter, the first electman today, which he asked us to read at all of our commission meetings. It reads as follows, and then there's a corrected memo that followed that. So I'll read both. And if I run out of my voice, Katie will pick up. FOI reading policy. While a meeting is in session, the following protocol should be followed. Personal devices should not be used to communicate through any means, including text message, email, instant message, social media post, or conversation. An exception will be made if the device is being used as part of the meeting session, i.e. a member is participating in the meeting via phone conference. If there is a need to communicate regarding personal business during the meeting, the member should excuse himself or herself from the meeting and exit the meeting room or request the chair to move from the meeting recess. Any conversations by members or questions should be addressed to and through the chair, talking, asking other another member a question or whispering any comments to another member should not take place. At public meetings, the public generally expects that the business being conducted is public business pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred, ETSQ, as attended FOI act, as amended FOI act. The public has right to know, has a right to know what public officials say at public meetings on topics related to the public's business, unless such statements are made during a proper executive session or are otherwise exempt from disclosure under the FOI act. Failure to adhere to the business of a, of the meeting and/or the aforementioned protocols could be subject, could subject public officials to an FOI request, requiring the disclosure of information that may be sensitive or inappropriate for public knowledge. In addition, a subsequent proceeding could be commenced with the FOI commission, which may result in a significant expenditure of time and resources, a fine for or commission actions being set aside, et cetera. That was filed later in the day by the following. Board chairs, I received feedback on the email I sent that I should provide context on how to implement the policy with your boards. First, please address the policy at the beginning of your next meeting and read the policy into record. Second, you should address the use of electronic devices during meetings. It is, it is acceptable to use phones and laptops to review materials when no paper materials are available. Make it clear that members cannot use devices to communicate during a meeting, even through social media. If a future FOIA complaint is substantiated, the board members may risk having personal information caught in an FOIA investigation. Finally, it may be a good idea to mention the use of electronic devices at the beginning of your meeting, or at least periodic. Thank you. Next on the agenda.
Um, I think you were going to make a brief statement as to using electronic devices. I don't believe you did. Thank you.
Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the presumption of the public hearing for seventeen Whitney Road. Advocate.
Yes, Ken Slater, for the record, I just know right up front that our expectation is that the hearing is going to be continued. So if there is a requirement, I haven't done the math, but there is a requirement. Okay, okay.
Uh, please note, I'm just gonna, before you start, I'm just gonna check the calendar on my phone because I can't see that one, and I'll give you that date before you can start.
Excellent.
And if our next meeting will be in March, and it'll be March fourteenth. March fourteenth, you know my calendar, sir.
There is additional information we just received, we want to be able to respond to. Also, we were before the Wetlands Commission last evening, and there were some suggestions made during dialogue with the commission that Mike is going to be making a couple of amendments to the plans. Uh, so in account for both of those reasons, our expectation was this would, would go on past the time with that for man traffic. Yeah, and, and as well as, uh, we'll, we'll have a, a report with respect to, uh, the, uh, exit and egress from a traffic expert. Uh, let me just turn the floor over to Mike.
David, you want to post the maps, or you want me to put them here?
David, why not bring them up?
Yeah, I, I am happy to, um, put the, um, site plans on the screen. In fact, I will do that right now. All I ask Mr. Mizuko is, as we go through, uh, just, um, advise me as to what you're pointing to, so I can follow it with your cursor.
Okay, sure. So, now you can page down, this is just the, the area about the satellite image of the site. This page didn't change. We made some minor corrections on the existing conditions, just, uh, some. I didn't hear you. Did you state your name and? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Mizuko, professional engineer representing the applicant. My office is in Danbury. Thank you. So as I said, this was just a couple of minor corrections on here. We added some notes on the sewer that were, there was some comments back from the public utilities director just about plugging that sewer line in the manhole. And just some other notes about existing utility connections to be terminated. All right, David, thank you. Next page, please. So on the site plan, again, we just added some notes. Yeah, the last note there about I believe it's the last note. Uh, I'm sorry, I think it's on the site utilities plan, so you can zoom back out. Okay, so on this plan, we just added the mechanical pads onto the site plan. Yeah. Is that for air conditioning and heating? Yes. Correct. Uh, shows up on. I'm sorry, I thought that was a site plan, site utility. So on this plan here, we did have the note about the the drainage system, the onsite detention system that has to be inspected by the Public Works Department. We also added the two, a separate wa- water lines for the domestic water and fire protection, as well as a meter pit that was requested at the property line of the domestic, uh, water service. And we moved the concrete washout pit to the western side of the building as opposed to the eastern side. And with regard to the drainage, we, we did revise calculations. The, initially, we only included the additional increase in impervious area. But the town engineer asked that we include the entire entire impervious area, including what was existing. So the entire watershed that's impervious is going to the detention system required additional water quality volume because of that additional impervious area. So we had them just modify the outlet of the detention system and change the orifice just so it let out a little more water, but we're storing more water for the water quality, which which basically holds water from up to about the two-year storm event without any discharge. And it gets infiltrated. Beyond that, it'll start to meter out through the orifice, and the system is designed again for the one-hundred-year storm. We did change, uh, sound this plan, but on the site plan, the trees that were in the front. We changed them from, we had Norway maples. Apparently, that's like an invasive species, not common to Connecticut, so we changed them to sugar maples. There, yep, those three, thank you, David. And I think what else? Why, uh, we just, on the detail sheet, well, just go down to the turning movements. So this is the plan that we submitted to the fire marshal that he based his review on. Correct. So, yep. So we just added, we changed the size of the aerial unit to match his dimensions for his unit. And then reran the turning movements based on that. So I have just several different perspectives of the vehicle coming in this way, or, you know, backing up and exiting. So that was the plan that he reviewed. And then paging down David to this sheet, we modified the handicap a symbol with the standard handicap space to show the dynamic wheel here. I don't know if there was, they, some years ago, they they improved the, the symbol, and so now they call it the dynamic, the dynamic handicap. So, so that we did that, and I think that was about it on this map. I just added the meter pit and, and the cross section for the sewer. I mean, the, the water service line detail. And then on this sheet here, we just added a detail of the sediment trap. And then a cross section, that AA cross section through the air. So, yeah, that's, uh, that's about it on the changes. And I know we did just receive some new comments from the town engineer this evening. And I think there's some other comments too. I didn't read through.
As well as the help.
Yeah. And I don't know if Chris, that the architect was supposed to be uh, here. I mean, I know he was having issues with his router, but he said he might be available.
I see somebody flickering up there, and it's probably him that can't connect.
Okay. So he was gonna try maybe from his phone, but he said he might not be able to get.
Oh, it was us?
I think so, yeah. So, yeah, that's, uh, that's kind of where we are right now. As Ken stated, we have a couple of things in Wetlands to, to address, nothing major. And, uh, we're waiting for the traffic consultant to review everything and get us a report.
And then we'll have that by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So nice, good question. So in regards to getting the traffic consultant, when you look at my report, I say that the police commissioner is the traffic authority, and they didn't recommend it. So I appreciate the thought that you are going to be providing some type of, um, uh, traffic summary or whatever, whatever you want to call it. Can I ask then, since you are doing that, could you look at it, it, um, the thought of you have two, you have two, you have one main entrance, and then the other entrance is, is that also going to be an entrance and exit, or is that an exit only?
Uh, it's just, uh, it's just entrance only, actually.
It's gonna be an entrance only?
Yeah.
Well, could you, could you ask them to look at that in regards to, um, making that possibly an exit with a right turn only, leading people leaving the site to go to a controlled intersection, which is light located at the intersection of fifty-three and Whitney? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if you don't mind, you know, you are going through that. Uh, it, it was just a thought that I had in regards to, and then maybe we can do something with that driveway. If that's the case, they feel that that is more effective than traveling down Elgin Avenue, which is a very long and narrow street, um, leading them to a controlled intersection may um, provide better tran- uh, trans- uh, traffic control. Um, and you could, you know, make the turn in such a way that it could only make a right turn from the exit. I've seen it done in other instances. And of course, it's not making people that live on Whitney Road happy, but it also is sending them on the short
Right.
traffic. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought.
You know, I understand.
Do you understand what I'm?
I understand exactly. It's a little bit of an issue in that you know, the fire marshal wants to get into the site in case there's an emergency, and if we, and that entrance was just designed and placed accordingly to that request. Not that it was going to be a two-way travel.
So it was going to be an in-only?
Correct.
Not an out-only?
Well, see, if it's out-only, I mean, in an emergency situation, I guess.
They're gonna go in no matter what. They're gonna get in there.
Yeah, so I'll talk to the traffic consultant.
Talk to them if you don't mind.
See, I, you know, and again, we'll have to probably circle back to the fire marshal to make sure that he's okay. So I understand what you're saying, and I will, I will convey that. No, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
No, not at this time. I'm sure the applicant will be instructed in contact with staff before the next meeting.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the floor to the public. Please remember the protocol that we follow. We try to be kind to one another. Um, state your name and your address, address your questions and your comments to the commission. Um, when all questions have been put on the table, the applicant or the commission will answer.
Hey, Alice, it's H. May fourteen Elgin Ave. Um, I, a couple of things, since our last meeting, um, I went back and looked through, um, and so and the two thousand seven Beppo Plan for Development and Conservation, which is still on the website, and I have a link here in all of this, I'll hand you, and I can email you a copy to put in the public record later. Um, the seventeen Whitney Road is marked red for commercial and not the yellow-orange, the map shows residential. So I have a copy of that here, too. I have the links. So I pulled that up today, and so in two thousand seven, now does not show it as residential, double R ten. Um, today, on our zoning map with the date of two thousand fourteen, it shows it as double R ten. So my question is, somewhere between two thousand seven and two thousand fourteen, was there a change approved by this commission, and is there proof that the tax assessor would have received that because it's still listed on the tax records as industrial? So that gets to my question from the last meeting as well, which was in my original memo, um, which also the memo that I submitted and I also emailed is not in the Google Drive on the public record. So I want to note that. Um, so if the property is double R ten, is there a difference in the tax rates? So that's a question that, um, you know, I would like to know, is the industrial tax rate less than the double R ten residential tax rate? So in that case, has Beppo been missing out on funds or, and or because of clerical error, or is the applicant? Um, you know, is there something, um, out of, out of line there? So what's the difference there? So that's a question that I have. Um, Beth, you just said, and thank you for saying that the, um, police commission doesn't think that a new traffic study needs to be done in this case. But, um, since safety is a critical issue, I'm going to submit in the public record, um, from your two thousand eighteen traffic study, which is available on the town website under the land use P O C D, the file that is showing the traffic and the tra- high crash, crash frequency. So if you're looking at the top five crash frequencies, the right up there is Fleetwood Ave and Whitney Road, which is Route fifty-three, grassy plain, right there at the end where Whitney comes down to fifty-three. Um, also, the traffic volumes with the heaviest, um, average daily volumes. And remember, this was in two thousand eighteen. So these are probably numbers from twenty seventeen, and of course, that has gone up, but all of this is available on, on the website, on the, um, planning design website. But in that time, the average daily traffic on Route three oh two Greenwood Ave had increased by a thousand since two thousand and five. So, I mean, the police commission right now might not want to do a current, uh, traffic study, but we do have numbers, and they're available in all the materials on the town site. So I submit that, and I'll send that also.
I'll ensure that that's put in the, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Um, wait.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I forgot to, um, to email you this, Beth, but I will do that when I get home tonight. So I'm Nancy Sudek to Ridgedale Road, and I attended the walkabout at seventeen Whitney Road, which was, um, from the thanks to be in the Wetman, Wetlands Commission. And I'm now more opposed than ever to the approval of forty-two unit apartment complex with sixty parking spaces. This property, if I understand correctly, has only one point seven five acres, although it's a little ambiguous about that. And they, that will be fully consumed by a forty-two unit apartment complex plus sixty parking places, all to be built over an impervious service and in close proximity to fragile wetlands, which are right at the edge of the property. A considerably smaller project would be more appropriate for this piece of land, and I would have no objection to that. When I consider the traffic that forty-two apartments will generate and the close proximity of both the deep breast and the entrance of the parking lot, I believe that will create an unsafe situation, not only in the parking lot itself, but on the small road where the entrance and exits are located. And if two adults live in each unit, which is quite likely, and each adult has a car, which is also quite likely, where will those additional twenty-four cars park? Certainly not on the adjoining roads, they're too small. And during the winter, it's illegal to leave a vehicle on those roads anyway. Please deny this project based on the very real fact that there will be too many people, too many cars, and too small a piece of property located on too small a road for the size of the overly large proposed development. Perhaps a compromise with the owners could be arranged, especially since they are now interested in creating affordable housing. Rather than forty-two apartments, a greatly reduced structure with far, far fewer apartments, all affordable, would be much more key. We were developing this one point seven six acres and would not impact nearly as much on the surrounding community, nor on Bethel's already overburdened infrastructure. Thank you for considering it.
Anyone else?
David, Francis Bursch.
Excuse me, David. I don't know what we are showing, something on the screen here that, um, is.
No, I've, I've, I've addressed it.
It's Nico. Would you tell Nico? Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
My apologies.
Action. Thank you. I'm not that important. All right. My name is Frank and Bursch. Three Honey Hollow Drive, as you know from previous meetings, I'm, uh, I'm opposed to the pandemic of, of multiple, approving multifamily housing, not only in this town, but towns all over the state. And, uh, and I am going to speak to the eight thirty G issue today, but as just, uh, endure maybe ninety seconds of pretext or context so that so that my arguments make sense when I get to them. All right, and, and I've spoken about this before. But our density is very high in Beppo. Relative density, we rank forty-fifth out of one hundred sixty-nine towns. That's pretty high. That's in the top twenty-six percent. All right, then we were considering adding more, more housing. Number two, in terms of affordable housing, um, we rank in terms of our percentage of affordable housing to overall housing units, we rank, um, sixth of, of thirty-seven towns in the Fairfield County over to Southbury down category, and sixty out of one hundred sixty-seven towns in the state. So we're in our area, we're, we're in the top sixteen percent of affordable housing, providing affordable housing units to our residents. And in the state, we're in the top thirty percent. Pretty high for a little town like Beppo. We're not a, you know, we're, we're behind the other towns, but the other towns that we're behind are big towns. The towns that we, yeah, they're, they're big cities. And, uh, you know, like Bridgeport, Stanford, Norwalk, and Danbury, they're ahead of us, of course. Even Stratford is, but then if you look at the towns in our area, these are towns, we have six percent of our housing uh, that qualifies for eight thirty G. And six percent of that housing is, um, is, is pretty, is a pretty generous number, considering our neighbors in that quarter that I just described. Seymour, Trumble, Greenwich, Brookfield, Milford, Litchfield, New Milford, Middlebury, Preston, Darien, Kent. These are all like four, three, four, five percent. We're working our way down. Westport's three point seven five percent, Wilton, three percent. Shelton, Richfield, Richfield's low three percent, New Canaan, now it's at a two percent proportion, we're six percent. Uh, Fairfield, I can't believe it, Fairfield, Newtown, um, Morris, Washington, Roxbury, Woodbury. These are all towns that we know. Southbury, Oxford, we're in the one percent category now. Monroe is like in the one percent category. Easton and Sherman and Weston and Warren and Richfield are all less than one percent. We're six percent already. So I don't know what the stampede is to approve all this. As long, I understand you need to be in compliance, and the, um, the applicant has already said, well, you know, if you don't have a good safety reason, health and safety reason, you have to approve. But you have, you have, um, you have something else at your disposal. You have the moratorium. Um, if you can get to, if you can qualify for a moratorium, and you could put things on hold for about four years, and which eleven or twelve other towns in our state have done with much less percentage of affordable housing in total units. And those, those towns are, that have either have one moratorium, qualify for one moratorium, or have been on their second. There's Brookfield, Darien, Milford, New Canaan, Southfield, Westport, Berlin, Farmington, Richfield, Trumble, and Wilton. And as I've explained to you, all these towns are way behind our percentage. And, uh, when I look at the, the latest, the latest data from two thousand twenty-one, we have like seven thousand two hundred ten overall housing units, three percent would require just a hundred forty-six units, but I understand you can't, you need a hundred forty-six units to meet the two percent, but you can't even count all of it. Like, yeah, I guess you need to be forty-six, you just can't count the houses, the affordable housing that were in place before nineteen ninety. So I really ask the board to scrub the numbers vigorously because I think we're really close. You know, two percent of, of seven thousand three hundred ten units means we only need a hundred forty-six affordable housing units built since nineteen ninety. We've got to be really close to that figure. Um, and we have applications here already. We have pending applications. We have people that haven't built yet that have already been approved. We're just about at that number, I think. But I really ask the board, you need to do the town service and actually, uh, do the calculation and see how close we are. Because then if we can get a moratorium, we have leverage. If this particular applicant comes in with thirteen units, and then the next month comes in with forty-two units, you know, if you have a moratorium, you can actually hold them to be more accountable. You need the leverage. Why would we cede our authority to the state? So it's some distant, distant collectivist bureaucracy, which, which the people in Hartford have become. Why would you do that? Just make the decisions locally yourself. I mean, when the society council came into play, uh, it, it stripped all zoning boards and towns of any protection. So towers can go in your backyard for fun, I love. Why would you want to seek authority to the state? So I'd ask you to vigorously scrub those numbers and to see how close we are if we're not already there. And then apply for a moratorium like other towns have. You could still go, but this will allow you to approve affordable housing on your terms, not on the applicant's terms. Now, getting to the, um, to the to the eight thirty G, um, you know, I know that we need To the eight thirty G, um, you know, I know that we need, we need to. Uh, at least comply, at least we we have to have objections based on safety. And health. And when I'm looking on the chart. That you provide with the agenda. The chart says in that area, since not two thousand four. Um, and the it might even be the applicant himself have complained about. You know, the stone yard there. I'm just not going to mention names, but you know, the the stone gravel yard there. And since two thousand four, it's been going on for like seventeen, eighteen years. Dust clouds, plumes of smoke, uh silica. Particulates, things that could be dangerous, people washing cars and then their cars are dusty, people painting. Their trailers and then their trailers are all dusty. These people have lived with. A lot of stuff because. At least the stone yard during those years wasn't really cooperating or complying. It didn't seem. You know, they did. They didn't comply with the water truck rule in the beginning. They didn't comply with the sprinkler work. They needed to wet things down. Right? And they weren't wetting things down. And there were plumes of smoke. And we're gonna, I think, and I I was trying to look at the map. I'm not exactly sure. But I think where this particular site is going. Is where all that dust was being created, maybe in the adjacent yard. And so we we might have a possibility of putting. A forty-two unit complex into the middle of a dust storm. Now, I don't know how compliant the the other yard has been since, but there are lots of phone calls, lots of complaints. Police were involved, police reports. And I think it was from the applicant themselves saying, hey, you know, this is, we can't live with this. Now we're going to put forty-two houses. In this particular. Spot. I mean, there's your exception. But I think moratorium is better leverage, then you can you can deal with with the applicant. Now, this is from what I'm gathering. I'm not, you know, I'm not accusing anybody, but. I know that the stone yard is there. I buy stuff from them in good yard, but they do create lots of dust and we're going to stick forty-two units right on their doorstep. It doesn't seem to be a good idea. So I'd ask you to consider all of those of those things. Thank you.
Anybody else here speaking? We have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
Uh, I see a Betty Liberty with a raised hand, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, BJ Liberty, Eighth Grand Street. Um. I would just like to ask if there's been any consideration to require uh EV. Um, charging stations and with forty-two units, what would be an appropriate ratio of cars to EV? Um, charging. And was this application sent to either um the. Sustainable Bethel Committee for review or even to the committee that's doing the traffic? Uh, study for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? David, do you have any hands raised?
I'm not seeing any other raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
My name's Caroline Smith. I'm at ninety-two Boyd Hill. Um, I I didn't prepare anything half as thorough as the people that went before me, but I live in Bethel. I live in town. I purposely bought my home close to downtown. I think the downtown area is phenomenal. And I just ask that you stop what we're building and overdeveloping. It is. It is ruining the small town feel of Bethel, pruning. The place where I grew up. And um. I just think you have to take into consideration the people that live here. Pardon me, live here and have to deal with the development after it's all setting done. I also have a question for the commission about the building of um. Uh seventeen Whitney. Arguing. On what are the considerations for dumpsters? And snow removal? Where will the snow go? Where will the dumpsters go? Um. And that would be my question. Thank you.
Once again, David, any raised hands on Zoom?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else from the audience here to speak?
Bradley Holtz, one Fairchild Drive. Um, at our last meeting, there was a question about uh the zoning maps and I came up here today. I just want to share with. That I've reviewed every meeting minute of this commission between the years two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven. At the time, the map indicated that the parcel was a commercial uh zone. From that point through twenty eleven, there was one authorized map change and it had to do with the residential. Uh, area nowhere near this particular parcel. So I would once again repeat something that was requested of the commission. At the last meeting, to please do a thorough review to determine why the map was altered. If this was an accident. Or if this was. Part of something else, but there's no record of it. And I find that deeply troubling, considering we're going with this particular parcel. Uh, today. So I just wanted to share, I actually did the homework. I I had access to all of those before they changed the website. Um, I have full, I pray of every meeting minute that was online before they changed the website. I reviewed every one of those documents. I could find no instance, any uh change to that.
You say commercial, not industrial?
It was actually listed as commercial in in two thousand and seven on the map that was released. Um, and then in two thousand and eleven, there was an update to the map. And then it was listed as uh, I believe it was RR ten. Um, but there was no. Uh, mention of a change in the zone. Any much in in that, and every one of them, and I actually did it twice. So. Mission. And what we should figure out is that and so the public can have a lot more faith in this whole process.
The only thing I would uh. I have to be. If the comment from the last speaker was that there was no reference to this particular property. There would need to be, just as if when you're zone, when your zoning map is adopted in the first instance. A map like the one you have on the wall was prepared. The commission reviewed it and it was adopted and all the properties that are in there wouldn't all be referenced. So. As long as that map, and it's my understanding that map was in fact adopted by the commission. Uh, there'd be no requirement that you'd have to mention any of the various properties on that map that you changed. The question is whether or not you adopted that map, and my understanding, yeah, I haven't. Done the specific research about the fact that it was adopted, but. I can imagine the commission actually had somebody prepare and have it uh be up on the walls effective and having never had a commission actually approve that. So as long as that map has been approved, there certainly would not be a requirement that minutes specifically refer to any of the properties that are on that. So all I wanted to add, and I don't have anything to my heart, have you said tonight?
Uh, I just. Let's regard those comment about. Different tax rates and it's my understanding that. The mill rate is the same, it's just that. The taxes would be different differentiated between the assessed value that the assessor makes on the properties. So I don't think it's the the question of. Whether it's industrial or commercial or residential, it's just they put a value to. The land and the youth, the buildings and. Whatever improvements are on that piece of property and they come up with an assessed value of that and then. They. You know, tie it to the mill rate and that's what you're paying taxes. I don't think there's a difference in there, although, you know, the value of the property could change, whether it's industrial or commercial or residential. And it could change from. You know, different residential properties as well. So it it all varies, but it it all boils down to what the assessed value is to be. It's crazier and the assessor puts on it. Um. Yeah, I think I think that was about it.
Thank you. Commission. Russian. Look at this.
I have a question. I have a question, but this is more for Beth. To ask, um. Because I've been following um the affordable housing issue across the country. Um, it's been, um, it was a huge article. I think it was the Washington Post. Um, had a huge article about affordable housing. Um. I just want to know.
I I get the post.
Yeah, um, is it fair to say, and I I could be wrong, that most of the towns with lower eight thirty? Gee housing have mostly two acre zoning. And therefore that is why there is not a lot of affordable housing going on. So for instance, in the Gold Coast areas. Places like Reading, Richfield is finally coming in, but is that something fair to say that most of those places? Have two acre zoning that you can't. Mess around with.
I would disagree. Okay, um, mainly because I would say that a lot of those areas outside of like a ready. Um, if you have sewer and water. You have the utilities that you need. Uh. For affordable housing, but that's not to say when you have two acre zoning with today's technology. Um pertaining to septic systems and wells that you could not quit. Um, uh, create an affordable housing project in a two acre zone. And I believe that you're seeing more and more of that happen in some of our uh more rural towns or in northern Connecticut.
Okay. Thank you. So.
Yeah, um, one of the comments brought up was about the uh. Doing the uh. Affordable thing, we're slowing that down. And what is the process for that?
I would tell you as far as um going for a moratorium, the town of Bethel has applied for a moratorium in the past. It was challenged by attorney Tim Pollister, who was at the time, one of the leading attorneys for eight thirty G process. He was very thorough in his review. Of um that application, I can't remember when we did it, but it's usually a three volume. Process of putting it all together. Um, and we did not meet the numbers associated with the two percent.
How long ago was that? Do you know roughly?
Um, it was, I believe, in around two thousand six or two thousand seven.
Was he give it a shout again?
I keep very good track of the numbers associated with the moratorium and I would tell you we're very close. You have two applications that have been approved that have not been built yet. And I believe that once those. Properties are developed, you will more than likely reach the number needed.
Definitely direct.
Believe me, I I.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a goal.
Um, as far as this uh application, we're still waiting for the state of Connecticut for the Department of Health.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's it.
Any members on the board? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Anybody on Zoom from the commission have any questions or comments?
I do not.
No questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay. I thought you said no. Bob, did you say yes or no?
Good. No question.
Thank you.
I I'm sorry, and and I don't mean uh. The confusion, but your answer like to Alison Germain's question. I didn't get it. You said that uh, in other words, you said that. Somehow whether the if the property was industrial or commercial or residential, it didn't mean anything.
Well, it.
It was her. Her point was. Excuse me, if I'm wrong. That if it was industrial. Would it have been charged more of, or we, I think, would the town be losing more taxes or would the town be gaining more?
I don't, I I'm gonna interject if you don't mind.
Okay, well, just because.
No, no.
I believe that I believe that's something that could only be answered by the assessor of the town of Bethel. I know you were tempting to answer it, but I think that that's really a question for the assessor. And if you like, had one, happy to refer.
Well, I just, I'm sorry, because she asked the last time as well.
And I.
I thought maybe Mike would have asked.
Yeah, no.
And I know, I mean, that is a put down, I know.
No, no, I know, I I. So you can go the other way. It it, you can go the other way too. In this case here, where the assessor has it listed as commercial property, where in fact it's residential. Even though if you look at it that way, it would be not conforming use. But so maybe he was paying too much taxes on it over the time because it was residential and. It was truly residential property.
It was just a question.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day, I think they look at it and what's the value of this piece of property? And that's the assessment and then the mill rate determines what the taxes are.
And I said, the only reason I brought it up is that she had asked it twice.
Yeah.
And I.
And that's my fault, bad answer for Richmond.
Uh, I had, there's a lot. To still look at here. One thing I do want to go, please, make some silly, however, I had three sugar maple trees in my yard. Changing. Sugar maples, when it comes to snow. And it comes to uh bad weather. Will break off. They are a mess. They do not hold up. In in our winters. Which which we may have again someday.
That's the silver maple.
But uh, no, I had, I had three sugar maples. And one, I was told definitely just take down because it was going to wind up on my roof. Because it kept breaking a large branch. So that just one little thing, there will, there will be a lot more questions. When we, when I finish reading all the material I have here today. So that's it for today. For me.
One more opportunity for the public.
Uh, Nancy Sudek to Ridgedale Road. I'm still a little uncertain what that property is currently zoned because I remember last time asking the question. And and I think Beth, you said we were going to go and research this on the, I think it's a tax card or something. It has a great big. Eye on it. And. And so that that to me says it was industrial and I remember bringing that up. It's in some some missus that I wrote. And Beth, I know said she was going to research that and other people asked the question.
Yes.
So is there an answer to that yet?
Not yet, no.
One thing, I'll jump into that because you've been polite on it, but. It doesn't matter one whit what the assessor puts on her cards in terms of what this commission does. You adopt the zoning regulations, if the zoning, if the assessor didn't get the memo and put a big eye on it. But that, excuse me, that plan, I'm sorry, that zoning map was adopted by your permit. He or she just didn't bring it up to speed, but it just doesn't matter. What matters for you is to apply your zoning regulations, your zoning map. And provisions of eight dash thirty G to this application. So I just wouldn't want to get tangled up in the axle in terms of whether or not an assessor has. Not many instances where there's some discrepancies between what an assessor does and what is actually. The reality of what the zoning commission has done, and that's the world that you live in, and I think it's clear and I think. Uh, Mr. Back to me to clear that 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 zoning. I'm, that zoning map is the operative zoning map and and it's clearly designated is the way that the application indicates.
Mr. Man.
Allison, thank you, main work to now should have. Respect, we understand that. We're asking, there is a discrepancy, there is a difference. There are maps that were from previous years. Colors that have shifted and changed, and so we're just asking to do the due diligence to look and see when that change happened. And if it was a clerical ever, if it was a clerical ever in whatever way, then we just want to know that. The property has been operating for the fourteen plus years that I've lived there as industrial, commercial. Not residential. So let's just call a spade a spade. So we just want to know. What is it? Because that has big impact on this application for eight thirty G. Because you can't have eight thirty G in an industrial zone. So that's all we're asking. And so we need the time to do that. So respectfully disagree. That this is the zoning map that yes, is approved, but where along the way, if there was an error made? And don't you want to know if there was a mistake? That's it.
Thank you.
The spade, if I go, I'm sorry. Just as a uh. Again, the point of having actually read, sorry, uh, still a pair of. Uh, one for a child back.
Yeah.
Um, having read the minutes, I can assure this commission. That the commission at the time and when the twenty eleven map was adopted. According to the minutes was not presented with the map and asked to approve it. The commission discussed changing the status of. A parcel of property and having the map updated to reflect the change. That is a very different scenario than what was just discussed. I don't know. About the rest of it, but I do know having minutes, that's minutes portrayed in terms of the process. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Okay.
One last. While we're, while we're, I don't think I have to redo.
Actually, just your name and address. Actually, just your name and address, you should do.
So while we are on the industrial topic.
Name.
Oh, Frank and first of three Honey Hollow Drive. Uh, you know, I wanted to speak to, you know, changing the, the zone uh that we presently have uh in that back road and back to church, I can't remember the name of the road uh from uh industrials to residential. You know, currently we are six percent as I described the thirty G realm. We need to get to ten percent before we are in full compliance. If we have four hundred forty units already, uh, and some of those, those don't even count. We have to get to seven hundred twenty, ten percent of seven hundred twenty, I mean, seven, seventy, ten percent of seven thousand two hundred units. But if we get to seven hundred twenty, we're gonna build more houses, the denominator goes up, you gotta still keep, you never catch it. So if you change the um, um, if you change the industrial zone to residential, you're just asking for more of a stampede. Why would you do that? Why would you do that? Why don't you, I mean, uh, the Terra Hot property that we developed years ago in seventies, eighties or whatever? That was, that was great, that was a great design. That could be, that whole area could be a great industrial complex with high tech companies in there and not have the, you know, the impact for the neighbors and to the town. But why don't you just keep it industrial? Why would you even think about changing it from industrial to allow more of this kind of stuff? And more of the impact that multifamily housing brings to Bethel. Why would you do that? Flip it around and develop and enhance the industrial zone. Make it sound.
Well, as you say, it's already been changed, call it a spade a spade, it's on the wall. Um, so that's what it's, that's what it is.
Thank you. At this point, we'll continue this hearing until our next meeting of March the fourteenth. You know. You see. Yes, it's in. Yeah.
That's next. It's next to me.
No. Next on the agenda is a business meeting. To the record, I'm gonna sit Rob Wallace for Rich Tivitt to the bathroom this evening. First thing is the minutes, because everybody had an opportunity to review them.
Notes and two key minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Attention? Don't move. We have the invoices now. I don't know. Move invoices to the next meeting.
Hold off any voices.
Not tonight.
She said she wasn't coming in, I almost cried, but yeah.
We're good.
The twenty-two years will do it to you.
Next on, next on the agenda is the work session, shirt item is nine and eleven Diamond Avenue, C A K Properties LLC. Map amendment, industrial to T O D overlay zone.
Yeah, that's right, we're cleaning. We, you're the cleanup.
Oh, sorry, I'm quite. You put this, I mean, keep this down here because we need.
Change. I want to know if the records are sure.
Yes. Sorry. Thought you would switch.
Long way here.
Oh, I forgot. This is just the thing I wanted to. Okay.
So at our last meeting, we've had a consensus to have to prepare a motion to approve the map amendment to officials' zoning map. Now, Bethel, Katie, could I ask you to read this into the record?
Sure. Motion to approve a map amendment to the official zoning map of the town of Bethel from industrial to the transit oriented development zone for the following property shown on our map. Proposed on change map prepared for Adriano Ishkavera to shaping the properties situated at nine and eleven Diamond Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut. Tax assessor map fourteen, box sixteen, lot fifty-four and fifty-five. This map was prepared by Zachary S. Ref, P S L license seven oh four two oh and dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. One, a minor map proposed map amendment shall be filed in the land records office of the town. Two, a description of the needs, needs and bounds of the property included in the map amendment shall be filed in the land records office of the town clerk. Three, such proof of filing shall be submitted to the land use office. It is recommended that they, based on the testimony received by the public and the commission, that consideration should be given to the following during the design phase of the site plan. One, reduce the height from four stories to a maximum of three. Two, provide ample public areas. Three, phasing of the projects, they'll be considered to provide an equal balance of commercial and residential consistently throughout the development. Reasons the commission has carefully reviewed aspects of the map amendment and have determined that proposed overlay district will create a desirable development that will provide affordable housing opportunities and support existing commercial entities located within the town downtown area. This decision is based on a master plan report Bethel forward, dated July sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, along with the input from the testimony received during the hearing process.
It needs to have an effective date, I would say of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I neglected to include that.
Okay, March fifteenth.
This is how it's only changed map should be done.
Right.
Okay, so it's those records.
Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. No.
I wanna get all the eyes first.
No, just.
Okay, Nays?
Uh, do we have a time for discussion? Please? I, I realize that, but when we do this, can we have discuss, we can have discussion? Sit still, can't we?
You wanna discuss the motion?
Yes.
You have a motion on the floor, and your, your question.
Yeah, well, no, it, alright, alright, then.
Ask the chair.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, something I had asked isn't here, so.
Okay, so ask the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I had mentioned very strongly at our last meeting, that I thought two hundred and thirty units was much too much for this area. And that, that this uh, that this project be, be reduced before it was re-presented, before it was presented as a cycle. That's what I asked for. And I don't think just reducing the height from four stories to three is going to do that.
Hey, Katie?
But yes.
If we reject this.
Then you have to come back.
We reject this motion because it's industrial, they'll be limited to two stories.
True. Well, but it, it'll be industrial, so.
Yeah, they can still build.
They can do.
I can do, because of everything, so.
You can do quite a bit there.
Alright. Alright. I know, I know, I know what I'm gonna do, okay, thank you.
Bob? Did you have a question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Mr. Lightgard.
Bob?
Yeah?
Yay or nay?
Yay.
Mr. Cooney?
I'm not seated, do I vote?
That's right, no, never mind, sorry. Mr. Shanley?
Yay.
To me, that's now a question, you're, it's happening.
I don't know. I don't know.
And I vote yes.
And I assume that since I seconded that, meant I voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's, can you do the votes, please?
Yeah.
Sure, go on, because we. I need to clarify.
Katie's no.
No.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes.
The vote was five to two? Five yeses, two noes?
Yes.
You got that, okay, I just have to help for a vote.
Thanks, I appreciate it. It's combination of faces and bouncing around, so just wanna be sure. Those, yes, thank you.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Don't move.
Okay. Gotcha.
Next on the agenda is twenty Worcester Street.
Yes.
Bravario site plan, three residential units.
Yeah.
Again, at the last meeting.
No, they're okay, these are all good, okay.
Yeah. Oh, here it is. I'm gonna have to ask the next one. I'm gonna have myself, Peter, sign.
At the last meeting, we had asked that, we have general consensus and asked that prepare a motion to approve.
Why don't you know?
Unevenable.
Okay, no.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same, but so I'm starting reading.
Oh, yeah.
I can do it.
Yes. I've been coughing and.
Very good one.
I'm saying. Um. Wow. Motion to approve a site plan to add a second structure to property located at twenty Worcester Street, map twenty-two, block thirty-seven A and lot seven. The proposed structure will contain three residential units in addition to the two units which are present, presently on the site. The site plan is approved in accordance with drawings prepared by Artel Engineering Group LLC dated eight thirty twenty twenty-two, last revised um, what month would that be?
On June.
Because it says zero, zero.
Good, it would be two nine, zero two.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ben.
Last revised. Um, two nine, two nine, twenty twenty-three. Following items shall be addressed prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for construction. One, verification of removal of the third bedroom in the existing structure. Two, final architectural renderings shall be reviewed by the town of Bethels Consulting Architect Alyssa Volpody. Three, health department memo dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three shall be adhered to. Four, the standard conditions contained in a memo from Jan Stameo P E of the town of Bethel be incorporated into any permits issued. In approving this application, the commission reviewed conformance with the regulations and the master T O D plan and agree that it meets the, I'm sorry, master T O D plan and agree that it meets the design principles associated in the mentioned documents.
Thank you. Chairman, can I, I'm clarified?
Certainly.
Um, be, and again, this is only because you received some documentation this evening, which is in front of you. Um, and there's been some, another memo that was created by the Bethel Health. Uh, so I'm gonna ask that you acknowledge receipt of the revised maps that you have there to the health department's arbitrary bill. And also in your approval reference there uh memo dated two twenty-eight, twenty-three.
And what has changed with this map?
What has changed is, uh, there was um some discussion with the health department pertaining to the number of containers that are necessary to service the two structures. And uh, there was a lot of discussion between the health department and the applicant. And in my opinion, the applicant has come up with an uh a solution to the health department's request. And unfortunately, due to the limited time, the health department did not have time to review this this evening. So that's why I'm making mention of their memo for this evening of two twenty-eight, twenty-three. Basically saying that the applicant has to adhere to their recommendations. The memo? No, it's two pages. It's part of the records, but let's see. Yes.
Thank you. So we have the motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Can we do a raise a hand so it's clear?
Favor.
Eyes?
Did you get Bob?
I have Bob. Um, yes. One.
Unfortunately. I'm abstaining from this vote.
Who was, was that Paul Shanley?
Paul's abstaining.
We have four and one abstention.
Um, one, no.
And Nays? And Kennedy?
I'm green.
So what's that count?
For the four, four, two.
So moves?
Okay, that's.
Next item on the agenda. Benedict Road nine, ten, and seventeen Milco. Steiner Inc., D C D overlay twenty-two residential single family homes. It was here for the applicant.
Uh, in regards to Fieldstone property, it's due to the other items that you had on the agenda and was brought to my attention that the files that I put into the Google tribe were not well. Uh, one of them was corrupt.
Yes.
Yeah.
And almost fried somebody's computer, I forget which one it is.
I, I had a lot of trouble.
It was mine.
Do you have maps? Can you just open up the maps? If you don't mind.
Hi, Peter Olson. I'm here to be at the Appletest, Snyder Inc. Um, which is, or shortly, the old and all the properties we're doing some lottery additions. We were before you for a map amendment, four lots at the end of Millbrook to place the main, the R T six zone. And now we're here with the development. But in addition to an application for site plan, we have an application for special exception for exclamation of belt. We have a, an application for a map amendment to put the property into the D C D overlay district. And that was part of the text amendment that we brought to you before to allow the D C D to overlay the R T.
So the.
Yeah.
So Chris Steiner is.
We have an easel over there.
The U S B is also going, I would consider it as well.
Yep.
Just do a very, very brief, just show him, get him oriented.
Chris Steiner from the applicant Snyder Inc. will give you a brief introduction to the project.
Good evening, Chris Steiner, uh, Steiner.
It's the public would like to move so they can see the land. Feel free to. Sorry, Mr. Steiner.
No, no, bro. Uh, Chris Steiner, Steiner with offices at two Parkland Drive, Bethel, Connecticut. Um, what we have kind of be here before you today is the um, what we call Fieldstone, uh, the one that you saw in comments. It is a six, six and a half acre parcel of land along Benedict Road. The uh, if I could try to orientate yourself, Route Six is along this portion, the Littlest Angel is on this corner here. And then this piece had been uh, had been, had been divided off into a separate parcel which combines four parcels on Millbrook, which we were, I think, before you guys a couple months ago, months ago, regarding the uh, the text amendment. So what we're doing now is we're combining, we've combined all these properties of land and we are proposing a twenty-two lot, um, a uh, homes, single family homes. On, on this parcel, we have uh, we have green space, common area here. And then we have some uh, green space back here, where, where before wetlands. Um, as we speak, we were there last night and um, and kind of what we've put together is we're, we're doing other, there are three bedroom homes. Uh, there are twelve units with bedroom on the uh first floor with mattress on the first floor and then ten units with uh, three bedrooms upstairs there. And then this is just kind of a rendering that more uh, from seventy-two architect of the development.
One note that Chris uh, didn't mention is that the four lot. One note that Chris uh, didn't mention is that the four lots that are on Millbrook Road are part of this parcel and will not be touched except for cleaning out some drainage.
Those will all be kept under the uh.
The D C D requires thirty-five percent of the parcel be set aside as open space. So we'll meet that criteria. So um, hopefully you'll accept the application tonight and schedule this for a public hearing. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just have a question. Could you explain again? Are these single-family homes?
Yeah.
Or being? Because we said something about lower levels and upper levels.
The uh, what we're, what we're looking to do is these larger uh, units here uh, that they have a first floor master downstairs with two bedrooms upstairs.
And so they split. Some, some have that and some don't.
Yes, that's correct. So kind of just says like the, and then like the two car garages would have a master downstairs around twenty-two hundred square feet. Um, and then the single car garage have three bedrooms upstairs in this sort of large living, you know, just a living family kitchen. And it's on the first floor, single car garages around eighteen hundred square feet.
But this is a condo associate.
Yes, yeah, within the, the, the zone, it's, it's the uh, it's all part of a whole investigation.
I'm, I'm visualizing, yes. I, I, I live off of Benedict.
Yeah.
Um, where is the Littlest Angel?
Uh, the Littlest Angel is, is right, right down here in this portion here. So, so if you, if you kind of orientate yourself, if you're going north on Benedict, that's north on Benedict here. You're at the micro town hotel it's here, the stop, the stoplight.
I know, you gotta be somewhere to go to. Oh, yeah, okay. The Littlest Angel is, is, oh, I'm, I'm looking at Benedict. Oh, my God. I'm sorry. No, I know where I, you know what I'm thinking? Benedict is about six. No, no, I know, I know.
Okay.
That, that's where all the churches that you mean and how many we're doing this will work.
Yeah.
I know where it is. I know.
And she lives down the street.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. That's where I live, yeah.
Any idea on your timeline?
No.
Arms out.
How quickly we'd like you to, I mean, you can approve it tonight if you'd like.
When they'll be finished?
They haven't even been approved yet.
We would, we would be.
Never mind, I'll wait.
Would be very.
Wait to set separate public hearing.
I mean, we would um, obviously, we would, we, we think we, we're very excited about this project. We think it's gonna be a fun project for us. Um, and I think there's definitely a demand for it. So we, we would like to get started as soon as we can, and I think it would uh, I think we would like to push it what, what we can.
The market will dictate how quickly they're sold.
Yeah.
These units would be for sale or for rent?
For sale.
And who, I, I, I think I heard it, it would be like a condominium con uh, association there?
Common interest community is the, is the term there. Cause a lot of people think condo is, you know, a town home thing. These are single-family homes within a common interest community.
We talked about that when you guys came in for the text amendment, I think. So nothing's really changed from what we talked about when you were in it last time, correct?
Correct.
I can't really see the, 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 the drawings there. Um, and I just checked the drive and didn't see them there. But uh, I assume if it hasn't really changed too much. Yeah, it hasn't changed much at all. Now, does that go all the way up to Route Six? I know you guys had.
No, keeping.
A certain amount of feet of Route Six available.
Perhaps it may be a parcel along Route Six that remains untouched by this development.
Yep, and then, and then just to.
Still RT six.
My, well.
Yeah.
Yep. And you had said those four lots at the end of Millbrook maybe touched for drainage, but no, no buildings on them.
We're not putting any drainage into it, but we've made a commitment to clean it up.
Excellent, yep.
There's some blockage there.
Alright.
Last time we met, there was concerns of the residences along Millbrook with uh, some, some drainage and uh, some uh, when it heavy rains, um, they get some flooding issues uh, and we, we looked at the site. Uh, we kind of looked at the drainage there. We found that there's, there's a um, kind of a, a blockage over the years of just silt building up. And uh, we're before the wetlands commission to, to get a permit to, to, to help clean that up.
Excellent. Excellent.
Sounds good.
And I have a question.
Thank you.
Dan?
Okay, so can we?
Bob has a question.
Hey Bob, I'm sorry.
Is there an affordable component to this or no?
No.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to set Steiner Inc., Benedict Road, eight, nine, ten, seventeen Millbrook Road, that D C D overlay twenty-two residential single-family home for a public hearing, the date of
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth, and for it to be sent out, go the appropriate issue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yay. Extensions. Don't move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Anything from the public?
Um, just a reminder that you have school.
The eleventh.
March eleventh.
I was looking at that book today.
Did you go, get your books?
Oh, yeah.
I'm on page four hundred.
I live with two twenty.
Out of three hundred and twenty. I've got two twenty ones.
Just remember that, you know, some of those things are applicable to you, some are not. So don't be afraid or concerned. You know, um, most of it is, is true dialogue, speaking. And like I said, I do multitask while I'm listening. And don't forget that our attorney Chuck Andrews is on there too.
I bought him today.
As one of the teachers.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Peter Olson, yeah.
I have a quick question about that. So if one cannot attend either part or all, when will that be available for um, evening viewing?
Um, I'm, I'm waiting to hear from them. They'll let us know, but you will be entitled to um, get something so you can.
Okay, and, and.
The most important part is, is the material that you receive.
Right.
Because it's invaluable.
Right.
All you have is look at the index of that book and any subject that you possibly could have.
Right.
Be addressed.
May, may I? And I also, sorry.
The webinar, whatever it is, we'll get a um.
You should.
May, may I answer this question, Beth?
Sure, go ahead, David.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so Penny, uh, I, I believe if, if you have not received an email from the Connecticut Bar Association already, and I myself have not, I would presume that all the other uh, commission members that have signed up for this also have not. You, you probably get an email from the Bar Association the week before and they'll give you a hyperlink for the passcode to attend the meeting. And then after the meeting is done and whoever is doing the video for on the Bar Association, you'll get another email with a hyperlink to access the recording. So that goes right to you. You don't have to ask us for that. Um, just keep a tabs, and this goes for all the commissioners. Keep a tabs on your email for, that you used um, as part of your Bar Association commission stuff, cause that's where that recording is gonna get sent.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yep, not a problem.
Anything else, Beth?
No.
All right.
Not at this time.
Comments from the commission? Comments from the public before we close?
Yes. Can I talk on eleven Diamond now?
I was just gonna say something before you speak.
Okay.
Um, let me think about that for one second. Okay. So nine and eleven Diamond Avenue, you did the approval. Okay, it's part of the minutes. So yes.
Okay.
You hence me.
Thank you. Um, obviously, I'm disappointed. Oh, I'm sorry, did I just get your name?
For your name.
Janoy.
Janoy.
Yes, and Diamond Avenue, so. Obviously, I'm disappointed. My neighbors will be disappointed, we're discouraged, and I find that a lot of people around town who have communicated with me, who don't live in my neighborhood, are feeling ignored and inconsequential and like they're just wasting their time fighting with rooms. I'm insane enough to think that you can keep doing it and somehow things will change. So, you know, I can't get rid of me that fast. Um, since the hearing closed, the last thing I said at that public hearing was that um, attorney Marcus had spoken truthfully what he said. Um, if the neighbors don't like living in an urban environment, and he used that word, that we, we just move. And I had to send an apology to all of my neighbors after that because I realized that I was speaking as someone who can do that. I don't know where we'd go, but we can do that. We can afford to do that. A lot of my neighbors can't. They several of them bought during the pandemic when prices were high and interest rates were low. Some of them are already underwater with their mortgages or however you call that. Even if they could sell, they'd have to pay closing costs and attorney's costs and all of that and moving expenses. And I don't know where in Bethel they could find another place like what they've got at the price they've bought. After you take away all the expenses of them and the six percent rate for mortgages. My, one of my neighbors lives in eight hundred square feet. You can't downsize from a one-bedroom, eight hundred square foot house. So, you know, we can do that. We could do that. We don't want to do that. But that's possible for us to downsize. They can't downsize and they won't be able to afford to live in the apartments in the neighborhood. I mean, they can't live at the grand. They won't be able to live across the street from them. So they're stuck. And so I apologize to them on the record for my oversight, my ignorance, really. Since the public hearing closed, I've heard a lot of things that were infusing, immaterial, spurious, completely illogical. I've heard people using arguments to support the zone change that we use to fight against adding industrial uses on Diamond Avenue twice. I've never heard any place in town spoken of with such contempt as some of the comments that I've heard, not from you guys, but some of the things I've, I've heard about my neighborhood. And, you know, it's given me a lot of insights. What I haven't heard through the whole thing is everybody disavow this. I haven't heard anybody say, oops, what were we thinking? You know, we aren't gonna take your homes and we want you to live in them. We want you to stay there. So I think what we see going forward and what we do with applications for that land is really gonna tell us how you feel about us staying in our homes on our street. Um, that's all I have to say.
So I am coming a frequent flyer here this evening. Brad Colts, one, Brad Child. Um, I would like to inform the board that based on the illegal activity that occurred at the last meeting, which the public was dispersed while we need to come back in, while you were in executive session. I've already consulted with two attorneys and a formal complaint will be filed with Freedom of Information Commission tomorrow, seeking to vacate all activity by this board after the executive session at the last meeting and therefore invalidating what you just did. Secondly, I, on behalf of the Bethel Preservation Society, will be filing a suit regarding the transfer of this zone from industrial, which the town is on record, we do not have enough of, to residential. Just wanted to share the report. Um, I'm bewildered why this is just taking place this evening. Um, for those of you who may not be aware, I've already alerted town attorney to this. The crowd was illegally dispersed by an employee of the town while waiting to come back into the meeting. That's a complete violation of the information law statutes of the state. And I'm just shocked that it occurred, it occurred publicly, no one took a stand against it, and uh, I, I'm gonna take a stand about it now. So, just want to watch it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, not yet. Public hearing scheduled.
Uh, there is, there is a gentleman online who has a tendress, Mr. Chairman.
Hey folks. Can you hear me? Am I recognized to speak?
Name, please, and address?
Oh, Nicholas Jordan, twenty, uh, Wolfpits Road. Bethel. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, oh, I just wanted to address kind of follow up with what the gentleman just said. Um, I wasn't, I don't know if I saw what happened at, at the meeting or if anything, you know, illegal happened or um, or what exactly how grievous the circumstances were in that. But I um, I just noticed like, and I feel that it may not be productive uh, necessarily, I don't know, maybe it is, but maybe it won't be the most productive uh, use of funds and also energy to be combative with the commission. Um, because I don't think it's necessarily gonna re- resolve anything, or I think it might just distract from issues instead of solving them potentially, instead of uh, instead of addressing what the issues that need to be addressed. If they need to be addressed like legally, I, then I, by all means, like whatever that process is, I think should have, maybe happen, whatever, but otherwise, I think uh, we should all be on the same side. And we are, I believe, in, in, you know, as members of the community of Bethel, all of us here, um, especially, you know, all of everybody in the room, right? I assume, I think, um, that we're basically on the same team. Um, and well, members of the public included and the commission, I think. Anyway, thanks. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, thanks.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Not at this time, not, not that I can see, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David. Um, public hearing for TRB.
No, remember, that's the public hearing schedule.
It's already scheduled.
Show that, you know. Right. I show them on the agenda when you schedule public hearings. I can see what's happening.
Bob, you had a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good night. Thank you all.
Good everyone.